So we're back. We are back into public session. And it's our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, have the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under our own jurisdiction with liberty and justice for all. Megan, do we have any correspondence?
No, this one.
Public comment. At the end. Kathy, you wanted to speak at the end.
At the end.
At the end.
Thank you.
Alright, sure. Okay. First up, we have the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they'd like to extract from the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Okay. Unfortunately, Sandy Stein had a death in her family, and so she will not be with us for the budget update discussion. So our next topic is board goals. There's a sheet, there's a page in your packets that talk to the goals that we discussed in the retreat. And it's after the policies. It's, we record that goal is 2019 to 2020. So I sent the board goals out. Sent them out with the minutes, and then we sent them again on Thursday. Do anyone have any comments, reports, anything? Thoughts?
I have a comment. I motion to approve them as stated.
I guess it's not a bad idea. Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Further discussion on the board goals. Marcia, they just made a motion on moving the board goals. I don't, he had the wording that he mentioned.
I motion to accept them as stated.
I seconded that.
No one have any comments? In favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Board meeting topic. So I'm just, the next item on the agenda is sort of for 1920, those are the typical sort of meeting topics, presentations. I think we probably gave that out when we did the retreat also. Yes. But just to kind of get you a sense of what will come up over the year. These are not the only agenda items that we have, but these are sort of like some of the things that we do every year, and then just where they kind of tend to fall in terms of the presentation. So we can always add to them. We might change some of them, as I see, I've already sort of a little bit.
The only thing I was going to say is that we have just, this afternoon, found out that in the November meeting, we have typically adjusted because of the Towns Interface Service. Turns out the Towns Interface Service is going to be a little later in the month. So Monday, the 18th of November, the third Monday, should work as normal for our board meeting.
That's number.
So we will, we will go back and we'll put this in future board updates, but I believe that that can remain on the third Monday, based upon the information we received this afternoon.
I think, I guess they accumulated both.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Thanksgiving's a little late here. Okay. So this is just an informational thing on these meetings. And again, if you want to move things around, if there's other things you could want to make sure we get, we'll talk about them. But just so you have a sense of kind of what things come up during the year in case you want to make sure we discuss them. Next up, PTO update. So I've been informed that PTO is going to start to send in a written summary as opposed to live, and I did not receive anything as of this afternoon from them. So if you just permit me to just do the last check here.
I have a copy.
You do?
Yes. Joy sent it. Joy sent it.
Thank you.
Do you want me to forward that, or?
Sure. Sure. Can you add it to the meeting?
I can.
Yeah, maybe just add it to the meeting.
Okay.
I think it's just important for us to say that the PTO does a remarkable job of support in many ways for our school, and for our kids, and for our teachers, and we appreciate all the efforts that they have already taken, that have already taken place this year in terms of the ice cream social, and in terms of a lot of the planning that's already started to go on.
If I had to get the board chair, would you rather have us not wait for that? Oh, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Do you want me just to send it to you?
You can, you can send it. I don't know if it's in bullet form, or if it's in link.
It's just in an email.
It's an email. Okay.
Go ahead and say it. If you want, I can move on to the next thing.
Go ahead, move on to the next. Okay. Alright, okay, alright.
Superintendent's report.
Okay. So welcome, welcome board members. And also I want to just point out that this is, I believe, our first live video of a board event meeting. Is that not true, or is that true?
Well, but they'll see you soon.
Oh, not yet.
Retable it.
Right, that's something in the way.
We have to pose you out.
Okay. But live video is coming, right? Boo, a live video, live video is coming, right?
It may be arranged, yes.
Okay, good. So I just would like to say that it's been a really terrific start to the year, a seamless start for students as well as for staff. We have had terrific parent open houses, a great ice cream social. I'm going to let our principal Lisa Sherman share more about that in a few moments. Our enrollment, we opened school with 838 students, less than our demographer had suggested, which was more like 870. And so therefore, we pretty much stayed even and stayed consistent with the ending of last year's, last year's school year. Board members will want to take note that the town is hosting a Freedom of Information Workshop on September 25th at 6:30 at the Town Hall Main Meeting Room. The state's Public Education Officer for the Freedom of Information Commission will lead this workshop and help you understand the ins and outs of FOI, and how to run meetings that comply with the law. If you plan on attending, please contact our town clerk, Stephanie Tralaglio. We recently have embarked on our three-time-a-year star screening, and I'm going to let Principal Sherman talk a little bit about that in a few moments. Board members have been made aware that the New Haven Public Schools has communicated with all area school districts in the New Haven area regarding their intent, or their hope, to charge surrounding districts like ours a dollar amount for each of the suburban students attending their magnet schools. This has been an aim or an attempt of theirs in the past. The Commissioner of Education in the past has not allowed this, and we expect the new commissioner to still uphold that past decision of not allowing the charge to happen. Area superintendents in this greater group, in this greater area, are communicating with the commissioner to restate our policy and our position that this will provide a hardship to our districts. There are many districts that would have a very, very significant hardship. We have a very limited number of students attending in New Haven. We actually are still trying to get the, New Haven's actually provide us with the exact number, but it's a very, very small number, and I'll let you know that when it comes available. But just so you know, that is, if you've heard about it or read about it, we're trying to address that in the same way it's been addressed in the past. Typically, at this meeting in September, we will be presenting our smarter balance results, but they were released, the complete results were released much later than usual. So as many districts are doing, we're going to be reporting on this to you in October. A preliminary, preliminary review of the results do though indicate a very positive increase in our student achievement for Beecher students. And we're looking forward to talking about this a little bit later in the meeting when we ask if there's any questions or comments in preparation for next month's presentation on that. As you know from past updates, there's going to be an attorney from the Connecticut State Department of Education Legal Department, Attorney Matt Van Horst, who will be presenting information to the BOA boards, and it's an open meeting for the public as well, on September 26th, Thursday night at 6 o'clock, in the lecture hall at Emity High School. Again, this is an opportunity for us to hear from the legal department of the state regarding regionalization, what districts have done this before, what are the issues, what are the steps, what are the questions that are out there? So that will be taking place. If you have any of the last questions, or I haven't received any questions yet, if you have questions that you want us to pose the attorney prior to the meeting, please get those to me this week, because he's only taken them for a while longer. So let me know about that. As you may know, that we are doing a website refresh, and we are hoping to open our new website up in mid to late October. And the principals' update message on the first day encourage parents and board members for that matter to provide any input in assisting us as we maximize the helpfulness of this new website. So if you have any thoughts, please let Lisa know, or myself, or James Crawford, our technology director. And it's that time of the year we're actually thinking about the Halloween hoots. So as you know, Saturday, October 19th, will be a very, very special day at Beecher Road School, and we thank the PTO again for their support, their planning, and all that goes into making this a fun-filled day of celebration for our kids. That is the end of my report, and I think naturally we'd like to go into Lisa's report as principal, and then we will do a recognition of our, our special guest.
I wasn't sure if Gina was going to be here, so I'm a little excited that she is. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to be here. As you know, we always start our year with three days of professional learning for our staff. This year, we did something a little bit different, where we actually had our teaching assistants really in line with all of our teachers. So a lot of the learning that our teachers engaged in, our teacher assistants were side by side, right with them. So they had a lot of the same language and a lot of the same learning to start the year off. So some of the professional development opportunities that we provided, we gave Dibble's training. We had two teachers who supported that work, Teresa Navuzzi and Kathy Marther. A big shout out and thank you to them for that work and training. And they trained all of our kindergarten first and kindergarten and first grade teachers, and our special education teachers, and again, several of our teaching assistants were trained in that. That is a new assessment that we are administering in K-N1. We also provided teachers opportunities to review student data. They had the opportunity to look through all of the portfolios of their receiving students. And we also gave them, in conjunction with that, an opportunity to have vertical conversations. This is an opportunity for the teachers to meet together with both the grade that they are ascending and the grade that they are receiving, so they get to talk all about their students before they even walk in the door, which is very helpful to us. And finally, some of our staff members engage in some technology training with Mr. Crawford and Ms. Tralaglio around digital safety. So that's just a small sampling of the work that we did at the start of the year. And as I'm sure you already know, we had an inspirational speaker at the start of the year, Steve Sobel. He was very well received, and very, very, very many messages of positive feedback from our staff. And he actually really inspired a lot of kindness that has been popping up all over Beecher Road School, such as kind messages being left on teachers' doors. A student, one teacher has a piece of equipment that's missing, and so a student actually took it upon herself to make posters and hang it all around the school to help find this piece of equipment. And this past Friday, we actually engaged in a kindness cart where we delivered snacks and treats. It was Friday the 13th, and it was a full moon, and it was the first Friday after the first full week of school. So we decided we needed a little kindness cart, and we actually walked around to all of the teachers and shared some treats with them. We also started the very first day of school, I don't know if your students came home and reported this, but when they walked in the doors, we started the year with music playing and bubbles blowing, and it was just a very positive way to start the school year. They all walked in bopping, which was great, on the first day of school. That's what you want. So we are going to continue this positive energy all year long. The PTO ice cream social, for those of you that were there, it was a tremendous success once again. And the food trucks, lots of buzz around the field about the food trucks, and what an excellent addition they were. Many thanks to the PTO, not only for organizing events, but they also provided the ice cream for free this year, which was really amazing. Open houses, as Mr. Gilbert mentioned, were all, I feel like I'm leaning over to talk into the mic from, the open houses were really well attended. Again, as we wandered the halls, Ms. Merriman and Ms. Merrill and I were able to pop into many of the classrooms and hear the conversations that teachers and parents were having. And we received a lot of positive feedback from parents about what they were learning from their child's teachers. We also had our very first fire drill. It's been a busy few days. I think it's only day 10 of school, but we've already done a lot. So we had our first fire drill, which is something that we always do the first full week of school. The students did an amazing job. They followed all expectations, and the staff followed all procedures. We will continue, of course, fire drills throughout the school year. And the annual mag potluck also happened this past Friday. I saw many faces there as well, and it was, again, another really well-attended event. Finally, many of our teachers, all of our teachers, are starting the year with their responsive classroom practice of generating hopes and goals with the students. And this is a really great way for the students to think about the year and set some of their own learning and social goals. And then from that, they end up developing classroom expectations. So if your hope is to become a better writer, what do we as a class community need to do in order to support you in that learning? So many of our classrooms are having a lot of conversations around that. And actually, today, one of our librarians pulled me in and said, "Look at our amazing posters." So this is some of the work, the posters up on the wall is some of the work that the students are doing in the library space to think about the hopes and goals for the year in the library, and the way that they need to sort of accomplish those goals. I think that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that leads us to a special guest who's here tonight. I will just start off, is it okay with the board chair if I just say a few things? And then I would encourage any board members to certainly share as well. But I just want to say, I wrote this, thinking about the job of a principal. Having been a principal myself at one point, when I had hair and that much enthusiasm. But the job and responsibility of a principal is enormous. It's all-encompassing, and it's downright exhausting. The job is always more challenging, given the size of the school, the population, and the square footage. As we know, Beecher is literally the size of two or three elementary schools in one. So that brings me to Gina Prisco, an educator who I have great respect for, and an honor to have served here with here in Woodbridge. Upon her hire in 2012, Gina was charged with actually bringing two separate schools back together as one. And she did it. During her time here, she promoted the continued development of professional learning around readers and writers workshop, growing our students as readers and writers for life, rather than just teaching children to read and write. And her belief in the workshop model has now extended to math with Math Workshop. I know that Gina is proud of the collaborative efforts of the Professional Development and Teacher Evaluation Committee in expanding the professional learning opportunities that we've had for teachers, having a very differentiated learning plan. She should be proud of this, because she chaired this committee with Doreen Merrill. I also know that Gina has accomplished a lot of other things, including the transition to a standard spaced report card to help parents have a clearer picture of what their children are learning. And all this goes on and on and on. Gina is a leader who is not afraid of leading. She's not afraid of making the tough decisions. She is not at all here at the building level. She even took care of the flood when we had the big flood, when the S-wing pipe burst. And not only at the building level, but in a district like this, the principal is called upon to perform many district-level functions as well. At the end of the day, everyone at Beecher knows that Gina Prisco is a real person who cares about kids, who cares about her staff members. Gina, you lift a powerful legacy, and we're grateful for your time here. Best wishes, as you do it all again, in trouble.
So of course, I'll make a comment. I was involved with the hiring of Gina, who was on the search committee, and Gina started the same year my son Adam started at Beecher. And I'm thankful that he graduated from Beecher the same year you left Beecher, so he had a full experience with you. You've been an incredible leader. You've done wonderful things for our kids. We can't thank you enough for all of your service. We wish you the best of luck in trouble. We're sorry to see you go, but I'm sure we'll hear wonderful things about you.
Thank you very much.
I know Gina has some things to say, but I'm not sure many of the board members want to chime in now or after she talks, but I know that Gina has some things to say, so.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you all for the opportunity to come tonight. So FOI superintendent once said to me, "When you are looking to take a new position, it's not that you are running to something, you're not running away from something, you're running to something." So I had an opportunity here. When I came to Beecher seven years ago, I was very happy where I was. Things were going really well, but it was an opportunity for me to grow and change. This same opportunity presented itself in trouble. I really learned a lot here. I think I grew as an administrator. I learned as much from the teachers as hopefully they learned from me. But when this opportunity presented itself, so what I'm seeing is that where I am right now in Frenchtown takes all the wonderful things about Beecher, reading, writing workshop, math workshop, and some of the things that I missed about my previous school. I have a very specialized program for children with autism, where I am now. And it also, we are, much like here, a melting pot, where I am now. But it also puts me back to a larger district. My team here, and I'm looking at Doreen, because she was as much part of our team as the union leader and colleague Cheryl, and Melissa, and Al. Of course, I and Bob, my team here was amazing, but I was missing the larger district. And sometimes you get tired of hearing the voices in your own head and wanting to share more and talk more about curriculum and things that we could do to help establish change. So the good that comes with Beecher Road School is that you get to do it all. And sometimes, the tiring part is, you get to do it all. So I'm still doing it all a little bit, but I'm doing it in a place that is kind of like Beecher was when I got here, in need of some bringing together. And so I'm hoping to be able to do there what I did here. And again, thank you all so very, very much. This has been great. And it happened quickly, and if it did happen as fast as I did, it did, I might not have jumped. So, because it's kind of scary to leave what you know and to leave what is so comfortable. Because I graduated with the class that I came in with, and I felt like it was time. So that experience, that opportunity happened, and I'm grateful for another experience. So thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it. The board has been wonderful to work with. And Steve, if you didn't make a comment, it wouldn't be a board meeting. So thank you for. It's always great to work with all of you. So thank you for having me here.
Bob, you're still up.
I'm still up.
So we know Gina probably has 55 emails to return and other things to do before tomorrow. So Gina, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much, and believe me, we keep in touch. So I'll know all of what's going on. Thank you.
We'll see you later.
Thank you.
So this is an opportunity to come back to the board with some additional information that we talked about at our board retreat. As you know, we had a presentation on our stakeholder feedback at the July meeting. And the request from the board was to bring back the family responses in terms of factoring in the neutral component to that. And that's what we've done, as you know, board members received that information a few weeks ago. And so we're doing, again, a high-level summary to focus in on the family responses with those changes, as well as, again, to talk a little more about the actions in response to all the surveys and all the responses and all the stakeholder feedback that we had. I'm going to, these slides, a lot of these are the same ones, so I'm not going to labor on each one of them. You know, there's several purposes of our surveys that we discussed. The overview of our surveys through the years. The first bullet is really the key one. This is an updated high-level summary that focuses on the family response data that's calibrated to include neutral responses. Again, the family, the family survey is the only one out of all of our surveys that was created in the district, not created by Panorama. It was created by the previous administration, and it was first administration in 2014. And again, at that point, it was determined at that point in that first administration and further beyond, that neutrals would just not be counted. So again, we calibrated it to include those this time around. Panorama does administer all of our surveys. Participation, this is the same slide you saw the last time in terms of how the responses have been through the years, in terms of the percentage of the different stakeholders. Again, this is, again, a snapshot also of what grades are the children in of the families who took the family survey. This represents 149 families and 172 kids in those 149 families, and how they're broken out over the grade levels. Again, this slide talks a little bit about how many years has your child or children attended Beecher out of those families. And then we get into the survey slides that have helped us to see the recalibrated data. As you know, the numbers in the parentheses are the prior percentages that you saw in the first presentation of this. And the numbers to the left of the parentheses are the calibrated to include the neutral responses. So you can see that in the calibration, there are some changes. It's roughly 10% or so in change, give or take a little bit. So overall, some high numbers, but obviously calibrated in that particular fashion. The next slide was the target questions that have been tracked over the years that have gained the interest of how we are doing. And again, these are rework in the same particular fashion. In the parentheses are the prior numbers you saw in July, and to the left are the numbers that are calibrated to include the neutral responses. I will say, in a lot of these particular questions, there's work being done in these particular questions in a variety of ways. So communication, we talked about communication during the course of the year. You know that we're going to have a communication report later in the year, as we typically do in the spring, to talk a little bit about, just an update on our communication with parents and our stakeholders. But also, we've committed this year, partially out of our ad hoc enrichment committee, but also to embrace an important thing, is to have more full math communication with parents. There will be actual communication sent home to all parents at all grade levels, grades one through six, on each of the math units, so people have the same information, understanding, and be able to work with that in a consistent manner across the grade level. Also, in terms of the second question and the third question, opportunities to explore areas of interest or differentiating instruction. Our strategic plan certainly is addressing these kinds of things in our school enrichment model, in terms of our differentiation and moving our math compacting forward and differentiation. The fourth question, level and difficulty of homework, has been an anomaly question. We've talked about that for years, and the fact that that question, when it was reworded, when it was worded originally back in 2014, really, it's hard to interpret, really, what are we really asking in that question? So it's really not a question that's worded efficiently to help us to really understand what is a parent saying there, if they approve or don't approve, or it's favorable or not favorable. The next one is really a surprise, healthy food choices. That number went down more than I would have ever expected by recalibrating. And the reason I say I'm surprised is because our food service program has had two or three banner years. This past year, we haven't, we haven't seen the likes of the participation that we saw this past year. So certainly, people are making use and engaged in having their children buy lunch here, take advantage of the salad bar, and take advantage of all the other options advantage of the salad bar, and take advantage of all the other options that are there. Lastly, there's been a lot of work over the report card over the years, and as you can see, the numbers obviously going across, you can see that these are like all the other ones are calibrated, and they're a little lower than when we were counting the neutral, or not counting the neutral. Again, just as sort of a broad brush, I'm sure there'll be some questions, but these are the reflections that we brought to you in July, the fact that our strong results over student responses in terms of a positive or in terms of growth. There was disappointment and surprise in some ways, and sometimes there wasn't necessarily surprise because the timing of the survey coincided with challenging events such as the budget and other kinds of things that certainly, certainly had some impact on that. We talked a little bit about student gains positive, but not as great as we wanted. My own ownership of this, desiring and committing to increasing my contact with staff and families is something that's at the top of my list this year, and I think the results speak to that, so I certainly take that very seriously. And then also, taking a look at how do we continue to give feedback in classrooms and having a better understanding of what responses that teachers and staff gave in this particular survey. So again, as we thought about this, these are the initial steps that we showed you in July. Again, sharing, trying to expand collaboration, doing things that have been asked of us, creating the handbook, increasing professional development time for teacher assistants, trying to assess progress during the year, whether it's focus groups, or actually, we're now using really our WA executive board and our team leader meetings as one method of trying to gauge understanding and having dialogue and seeing where we're going. But I think these are the important steps that I'd like to just again reiterate, that I think having spent some time looking at this and really deliberating and really reflecting on some of the conversations we had in the building, these are the things that we have put into place to try to move forward. We had a very motivational keynote speaker, as Lisa spoke to you about, which was, I think, really a tremendous start to our year. Teachers have asked about continuing to revise and make more effective our student behavior protocols. We've done that already. We're working towards that. We're listening and talking, and we want to continue to make those as effective as they need to be. And again, that's teacher input into that, in terms of requesting that to be an improved area. Teachers asked about creating a staff handbook. We've done that because we felt that was something that was very helpful to people to have everything in one place and not always electronic. Teacher assistants have been asking for professional development time to collaborate with the people who they get direction from, the resource teachers. So again, we have established for the first time a weekly time where we can actually have that kind of dialogue between resource teacher and teacher assistant. We've engaged and restarted monthly meetings with our executive boards for both the teachers as well as for our teacher assistants and our CIL group as well, secretaries, custodians. And some of the important things here is right at the bottom, discussing, sharing, and understanding the findings, having some conversation. We had a very, very effective conversation, a very beneficial conversation in our team leader meeting a few weeks ago, truly trying to understand around the area of behavior. And the team leaders were very, very helpful in terms of kind of fleshing out and giving a little more depth in terms of how do we move forward in that area. So those are some things that we're doing. Another set of strategies and plans, there's been, it's been spoken about before about can there be administrative presence in the south part of the school? Our office is way up, right at kindergarten. So Lisa and Doreen have purpose to establish a flexible satellite office in the south portion of the school to be there, have that as a place at times during the week, and have that bigger presence there. Professional development is something we're looking at, and continued implementation of our strategic development plan, which again, as I mentioned earlier, does incorporate the areas of differentiation, looking at how do we meet student needs beyond the regular curriculums, which is enrichment clusters in grades three and four and other kinds of things like capstone. Using faculty meetings to share successes, increasing our opportunities for positive social interaction, and then making use of a very, very important committee in our building, the Safe School Climate Committee, to do a number of actions and a number of improvement interactions in terms of responsive classroom, reviewing proactive behavioral strategies, the peaceful bus initiative, taking that to the second year, and our B kindness month work. So all in all, we are putting those things in place. We wanted to continue to monitor those. Our monitoring right now is to really try to continue to have the conversations with teacher leaders, teacher assistant leaders through executive board meetings on a monthly basis, our team leader group, even PLC teams, using professional development feedback forms at the end of each of our professional development days to get a sense also for some feedback, and then eventually, obviously, readministering our spring survey this coming spring. A long-range plan could very well be to revisit our current survey process and content and look at alternatives or tweaking what we have. So I think there was going to be some questions and comments, so I wanted to try to include those quickly. Those are the change slides or our other slides that were part of this from the previous presentation. Glad to answer any questions or comments. Questions?
Thanks for sharing this and for making the data available as well. It's good to hear the comprehensive plan and particularly to focus on being able to share and understand the findings as a group. Can you go back to the slide with the new data? Can you tell us why you chose to share those particular data?
Is that this one there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was a slide from the original. This is not a new slide. This is the slide that we've shown in the last couple of years. And so this is the same, same questions, same four years, and just presented the data recalibrated. Is that it?
Well, sort of, yes. But looking at the 50 questions, these aren't the ones where problems necessarily are. So if you look across the 50 questions, there are other areas that appear to be areas of significant concern that aren't included in here.
Right. I was just trying to make sure that we addressed the things that we had in that particular presentation that were, what are the rework numbers here, Bob? If you, you know, if you took a little of that without the neutral, you know? So absolutely, I mean, I think again, the broad areas is those questions that are concerning probably to most of us are again in behavioral or climate or staff collaboration, staff administrative collaboration. There's a lot of questions there. And there may be other questions that may be on your mind that you've seen, some, what about this question? What about that question? So...
Well, I think both looking at the raw data and also the four-year trends, there are other patterns that emerge that aren't really covered in this. So a lot of the concerns, that food was the top rated item in the survey.
So the only thing, just one thing, not to interrupt, but about food, is the problem is there are a lot of kids in the school who don't buy hot lunch, and parents will put neutral down because it's part of the survey. So the, you know, the issue with that is, is that if you include neutrals as a positive, which, you know, I'm just, you know, that number represents a lot of people who don't actually use the food service, which is a, again...
I'm not trying to...
I think it's back to... No, I think it gets back to the issue that this, this survey, which was self-developed because there was nothing out there, probably should be, we should probably really discuss using something that's normed in other districts as well.
I agree, and the fact that, as has been mentioned before, that we have four consecutive surveys where the data that we can look at with the exact same questions is really helpful. And the areas where we seem to be struggling the most, honestly, are with leadership, including superintendent and school board.
Yes, exactly.
Are the two lowest-rated items.
Correct. That's right. Yeah, and hence, one of the things, again, self-reflecting in my own reflections here, knowing that I need to increase my visibility, both with staff and with community and parents. And yeah, school, yeah, school board is there as well, so...
We were right there.
Yeah, so we're neck and neck, I guess, you could say. Or ankle and ankle, whatever that might be. But you're right. And so I think that's certainly well deserved.
Is there future questions, like in future presentations that Bob is going to give? Is there certain questions that you think should be on there? Maybe you could send those to Marshall so that we could make sure that they appear in the next presentation?
There isn't a next presentation of this, right?
Well, no, like next year.
Right, next year. I mean, I think, I think what everyone is getting at is, I think some of these questions that are up there were chosen because in years past, they were areas that we were not doing well, and so the goal was, let's target some of these and see if we can make an improvement. I'm not so sure we made much of improvement, but I think there wasn't, you know, again, I don't remember why these were chosen initially, but these questions, I think, have been presented each year, probably since we've been doing these surveys. I think what Dave is getting at is, most of us would say, okay, what are the ones that we're falling behind the most on? List those, and then make sure that we're addressing those so that, you know, we're hitting areas where we're doing really poorly on, and how to address those issues. Is that...
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to use the survey data, we should look at the areas where we have the worst performance and figure out how do we meaningfully interpret that.
Yeah, I think, I think one thing to keep in mind is, is that, so, you know, it's our, our job to tell Bob, we didn't do well on these things, make a plan to fix them, right? Not, you know, we're not going to sit and discuss and figure out how to get a red up to a green or, you know, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, as we do think about, we've already talked somewhat about our goals already for the year, but, but as we think further about the goals, coming back to these sort of hot buttons sort of questions, and looking at how the survey has played into those, might give us a little bit more guidance as to how to respond to the community response. So I think this is an ongoing resource we can use in guiding how we do our future meetings and our decisions about what to focus our attention on.
I think one of the questions we've talked about is, what are the structural factors that may be contributing to the data that we have there? And how do we think broadly about that and any possible sources of data? And how can we triangulate? So it's not just this. We have the data from the staff and from the teachers. I'm very curious, I guess, since Principal Priscilla has left, but whether we have the opportunity to speak with her and get an exit interview, whether there are other ways that we can get data to help us understand what structural factors might be contributing.
On the subject of the exit interview, I have, I have been able to identify an exit interview format that other districts have found to be, small districts that don't have a human resources department, but similar to us, that is, has seemed to be, has proven to be pretty beneficial, and I am planning on using that and asking her to participate in that, as well as starting to use that for those who leave the district. So I think we have started to, and that was, I think, a helpful thing out of the retreat that we spoke about. So, because I think, actually, in my comments about, you know, in applauding Gina's work, embedded in there was also that it's the work of more than one person when a school is as large as it is, and it almost looks like two or three schools in one, and you have district function. So without drawing a conclusion, I think your comments are well founded in terms of trying to identify some of those comments from some of the leaves of the district.
So I think with regard to the family survey, I think one of the concerns I have is how actually interpretable those findings are, not because of the neutral category per se, but because of the low response rate.
Twenty-three percent.
I mean, we have 25, 26% response rate, and so when we're, you know, making conclusions about this, I think we're, I mean, we're making a few assumptions. One is that it's a representative sample, which it's probably not. It's not, we don't have a random sample here. And two, that, so this could be like those who are most pleased or less pleased, you know, more unhappy. And so we're, I think, and we're looking at these results over time, we're making an assumption that these are the same groups of individuals over time who are reporting. And so I just wanted to bring that up, is that I think it's, I think we should be careful about interpreting any one of these data points in time and be extra cautious about talking about change over time, interpreting a year-by-year trend.
Do you think that there's a way or benefit for us to get better engagement? And do you think it would give us better results if we got better engagement? Is that something we should be looking into?
Yeah, I guess that was one of the reasons why I brought this up, because I would like to know what the family response is and have a more reliable measure than what we have in terms of response rate. I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, have we tried strategies in the past to get the response rate up? Have we done things like incentives? Can we do something like a raffle or something like that?
Brownie, yeah. PTO.
When have we tried?
I know that, I mean, I'm sure maybe Lisa could speak to it about, well, I mean, we certainly recognize in year one, we had actually a pretty, you know, better response than we've had in subsequent years, but we've tried, we thought that was a bad response. And so, you know, we have tried every year, we have, we, at some point, we have not done a raffle, certainly.
Not a good idea.
Great idea.
I think something you said too, would be a good idea, of the same people again and again. So like, I don't know if it's possible, or does a family unit get an anonymized ID so that you know if it's the same people answering it, or is it just totally anonymous? You know what I'm saying?
Well, we, they send a link out, one to every family.
Yep.
Panorama may have a way of doing that, but I think you'd still have to make, you'd still have to be relying on the fact that if you filled it out last year, and I sent it back to you, that you're definitely going to fill it out again this year. I think you'd be, if I kind of boil it all down to, it's not, it's not necessarily a match cohort going from year to year to year.
But if the family had a, like a anonymous ID year to year, we would know, oh, this person has answered this question every year for five years, their student was in there. We don't know who that person is, but we know it was 325, you know, whatever it was. You know what I'm saying? I don't know if Panorama has some way to...
Yeah, I don't know. You know, they... I don't know if that's, I don't know why that would be useful necessarily. I mean, you know, like, I think...
I heard what he was saying about change of people, and I thought that maybe that would be useful, someone who knows more about...
They run statistical data over time.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, yeah, that's one possibility, looking at individuals over time. But I was even thinking about it at the, at the group level, so, and it has to do more with the representativeness of the sample we're getting. We don't know that those who responded last year are the same types of individuals who responded this year.
I think, I think the most salient point that he made is just that, in fact, the responses we get are probably the people who have the most passionate opinions about things.
Or, yeah, right, right, either on either side of it, either they're most unhappy.
I mean, there are going to be some people perhaps who just, you know, are so passionately, you know, they might not fill it out, but, but there's not much you can do about that. But you can address the issues of the most passionate people, and that I think should be one of our goals.
I have a few observations and a couple of questions. I would echo your comment, David, about when you look at the results, it falls in, the problem areas fall into, I would say, two big buckets. One of them is leadership, which dovetails, and I know what you're saying, which is, you know, you have small sample size, but when you look at other pieces of data, it begins to paint the picture altogether. So, for example, it's like leadership issues, we are focusing right now on the recalculated family responses, but we have to remember that the teacher and staff survey results were alarmingly bad consistently. And not only were they very poor, like in the actual sense, they were poor when you benchmark it nationally, and the trend line is decidedly down, right? So that, in conjunction with the leadership issues that you see through the family survey results, I think that there's a lot of work there. The other big area that I would say you could, and this is my interpretation of some of the questions, but I think that the other area is differentiation, whether, you know, students are being challenged enough, whether expectations are high enough, et cetera, et cetera. So those are the two areas that jumped out at me. And I thought what was also interesting in the data that you provided, thank you for doing that, is that it's helpful to look at the trend line and the family responses on the leadership issues, which seem from 2014 to current, seem to be on a downward slope. So that's something that we together need to, need to work on. I think that it's important to note on the teacher and staff survey results, the negative response, and I think we want to be careful by saying that because of the budget conversations that we've been having, as a result, the responses are negative. If you look back beyond this previous survey year, they were also negative last year. So I think that there's more that's going on, and we need to delve into what are the underlying issues. I have two questions. Given the leadership issues that, that you would gather are issues from the survey results, and this is circling back to... and this is circling back to questions that we had raised in previous conversations, what are the criteria that you use in assessing your leadership team? And what kind of data are you gathering to make those assessments?
Well, so, in terms of answering that the way I can answer it, because we're talking about, now we're talking about personnel, we're talking about evaluations. What I can say is, all the district leaders are, are to follow the administrator standards that are presented by the Connecticut State Department of Education. So our evaluation plan is built on the standards, whether it be in terms of evaluation, whether it's in terms of supervision, whether it's in terms of community involvement, whether it's in terms of decision-making, student-centeredness, those kinds of things. It's the leadership standards that are governing that. And I have, there's not a district where probably a superintendent has as much opportunity to work side by side as this place in terms of, because we're all in one building and we act as a team and we try to help each other out. I think, we've talked before about the fact that we probably have fewer administrators for both district and staff functions, or school functions, than a district in a neighboring town. But I look at all those things working side by side with people that fit into those standards. That's the best I can get, the best things I can give you without, in other words, you're talking about evaluation. So there's standards, and the evaluation plan that we have in paper, but also in practice, and we revisit a few times a year, is based on those standards.
And how do you, what kind of data are you gathering in order to assess based on those standards? So how, like, are you...
Do you want to see the evaluation plan? I mean, that's a...
We presented that, yeah, right. We could do that. I mean, I think that's a, that's a...
I mean, rather than him trying to remember off the top, there's an evaluation approved document that goes into the exact criteria that are used for administrative evaluation.
Right, so the criteria I get, which are based on standards, right? But then my second question, which I think is a more important question, how are you gathering that?
So, again, I'll give you a boilerplate because, again, without getting into specifics, but, you know, you're looking at goal setting. Administrators, just like teachers, have to do goal setting. So are they setting goals for this, for the responsibility they have for the entire building on the kind of student achievement data that they want to see and the growth that they want students to make? So the kinds of goals that they set, that they will be held accountable to hold the teachers accountable. So it's goals. It's also, what is their involvement in and around the school? Are they in classrooms? Are they not in classrooms? Are they approachable? Are they, and those are the more grassroots kind of things that you know from basically seeing people working, open door, not open door. There's performance and practice part of the evaluation plan that talks a little bit about, okay, so how are they doing with their evaluation process of evaluating their teachers? Do they meet the criteria of all the observations that are necessary? Are they giving feedback? Are they giving effective feedback to staff? How often do they give feedback to staff, which is part of our survey as well? So there's a lot of things. I mean, that could probably be a presentation alone about our evaluation plan for administrators.
Is there any upward feedback that is gathered? Is there any upward feedback that is gathered?
Explain that for me.
So, for example...
Survey of teachers about their principals.
Yes. So...
I don't think we'd, I don't...
Sometimes people call it 360 source or 360.
So last year, we did put out, not quite exactly what you're talking about, but we did ask teachers to sort of give us feedback on how they best receive feedback, if that makes sense. So to sort of work on, how are we working with you? How can we best work with you? How can we best support you? We've talked in the past about the potential for asking for what you are talking about, but we've never formally done that beyond just the anecdotal conversations we have or the emails that we get or the, you know, hallway conversations or just our interactions with teachers through our own teacher evaluation process. So in terms of, there's no hard survey that we have given out to teachers, is the short answer. But quantitatively, we probably could provide you with lots and lots of examples of feedback that we've received.
I think that is something we probably need to ask Floyd about, because, again, these are union contracts and evaluation process and how you gather feedback is legislated by the state. And I know because we have talked about 360 evaluations before.
Oh, yeah.
And that has come up. And it would have to be a union-approved negotiation to have that as being a criteria for evaluation. And we even discussed doing it not in the setting of evaluation, but just personal growth, and that was not...
Can you just clarify? I'm having a little bit of a hard time understanding. So, but how, I would think, I would think that the union would welcome the opportunity to provide feedback in an anonymous manner that was safe and couldn't be tracked back.
All I can...
I mean, it's an organization, right? So there are hierarchies and nobody wants to give negative feedback to their boss because they never do, which is why you bring in an outside party to come in and collect it. I'd be curious to understand why that might not be...
All I can say, you know, I'm happy to, we can talk about it again and Bob can look in. I'm just telling you, when we did discuss it previously during, it would have to be in a union, it has to be in a contract, but when we talked about evaluation and assessment, that process was, you know, not accepted. That there's other processes, but the idea of doing a 360 just wasn't...
Well, the survey data you just mentioned, right? It's not, just the other survey, we were in the bottom quintile for every category.
Again, I'm just telling you why, it's not that we've never discussed this before. I'm happy to do it or to look into it, but I think we just have to find out, again, I'm not, but when we negotiate with the, you know, we can't do something without having in a teacher or administrative contract, right?
But we could ask and see how they would respond.
Yeah, it would be helpful to ask because I think that 360 can be a powerful tool to help people understand their blind spots. And sometimes the fixes are really easy. Sometimes they're deep or like it requires a lot more, but I think it's very helpful for people to understand, okay, this works, what I'm doing, or this doesn't work.
I mean, again, I've done them for myself. We do, we've all, I'm sure we've all done them at some point in our careers, which is why we brought it up in the past. And we can discuss it, I mean, you know, we can discuss it, find out.
Thank you. I have an easy question. I think it is. Can you just tell me more about what does school fit me in that my previous slide, just like bullet point, it was like Tucson. Go back.
Yeah, school fit. I think it's best answered by just giving you a flavor of some of the questions that are part of that section at the end. School fit. Does school provide a high-quality academic program? The arts play a major role in the educational program. There's a strong program that focuses on the physical development and wellness of students. Feature Road School offers my child opportunities to explore areas of interest outside of the core content areas. So it's grouping questions that, in a category, that tries to try to describe the overall flavor of those questions.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions?
Thank you, Bob. As a point of process, I think there were two questions that are open, which is to speak with representatives to see whether it's possible to 360 and also to look into exit interview, if that's possible.
On the exit interview, if we decide on, like, who would actually conduct the thing?
Yeah, this is not a board decision. It's Bob's decision. So, well, we direct him. He's on it. Okay. You're still going, Rob. Are you going from here now? Open choice. Is that a slide or not? It's actually, there's a new in your packet, open choice.
Okay. So this is the time of the year where we discuss and just kind of bring back to our memory, how many choices do we have currently and how do we want to move forward when we get ready to declare the number of seats in January to the open choice program? There's a page here, it's right after the survey presentation, and it just gives you just, again, a quick snapshot of the philosophy on open choice for Woodbridge. You know, our goal is to increase the richness of our school and our student body. We've had New Haven students attend Future Road School for a number of years. This is a typical thing throughout the region, a typical program that is implemented. And so our goal is to have students start as early as possible kindergarten, obviously. And so therefore, the goal here is to really take note of how many students we have right now, what are some of the benefits, what is our demographics? You know, sometimes it's been a concern, how many students do we want to have from New Haven based upon not exceeding our class sizes? What is the state funding for the students that come here? How much do we get? And do we get a certain amount if there's different levels of percentages? We are right now just slightly over the 2% threshold, so we receive $4,000 per student. And so, one of the things I was going to mention to you is that, you might remember, we increased this from, when I first came here, we had 12 students, then we moved it to 14 students, and then moved it to 17 students. One of the reasons the board chose to move it to 17 students last year was because that would roughly equate just over the 2% amount and we knew that more funding would come with the students who were here. And one thing I would mention to you is, if enrollment continues to creep up, and now it hasn't crept up as much as we expected, but if we were over 850 right now, we would not be eligible for the $4,000 per student. So one of the things you might want to consider moving on this year is saying, we'll want to continue to keep pace with at least 2% of our population from a monetary standpoint. Now, from a programmatical and from a richness in terms of our diversity, this is one of the reasons why I encouraged us to increase the number of open choice students when I first came here three years ago. I'm going to applaud the board at that time for doing that. Right now, our class sizes, as you might know, as I mentioned earlier on, have not reached the point where we thought they were at this point in the year. We were thinking 870, we're now more like at 840. So I guess what I would ask people is, first of all, do you have any questions about this program? Do you have any questions about, you know, anything about that? But also, is the board willing to talk about maintaining 17 seats or even an 18 seat to continue to make sure we are approaching 2% or over 2% of our school population being from New Haven?
So I have a question. Do we have any, so first off, did we graduate any of our school choice students last year?
No, but we increased from 14 to 17. So we brought three new kindergartners in this year. We have three sixth graders currently in the open choice program right now, and so we will have three vacant seats next year.
Okay. And do we track, I don't know if this is possible, because I know this goes to like this whole student confidentiality thing that we struggle with. Do we track open choice students versus resident students in things like behavior testing?
No.
No.
If they do, it's among the administrative team, but it's not something that would be publicly reported or reported to the board.
Students must have a teacher, they're teacher students, it doesn't matter where they hail from.
Okay.
Correct. Those are my two questions.
So just, does anyone have other questions?
Yeah. What's the cost of talent to educate students here? Do we know that?
Eighteen thousand.
Probably eighteen thousand.
I guess, you know, we have, it's a tough issue because I think in an ideal world, we all want to be able to offer the opportunity for students who might not otherwise be able to have the opportunity to be educated in a good school. We do have some constraints. We have run out of space. We have budget constraints. And I guess, just taking a look at it from a maybe a financial perspective, costs eighteen thousand to educate a student, you get three thousand max, that's fifteen thousand. We have about, let's just say 10,000 as a population of Woodbridge, it's not really 9,000, but just 10,000 to do Easy Math. So it's what, a buck fifty for each resident of Woodbridge to cover the cost of an open choice student. So it's, I, for me, it's a hard decision. I, in a vacuum, without any of these constraints, I would say, yes, we should do it. And I might end up there as well, but we do have these constraints.
So, I have a, I can make a couple of comments, just historically. So, you know, a couple of things. So one, as much as I agree with you on the financial, the only thing I would just say, just to, you know, clarify one thing, is that our per pupil cost is based on what our expenditures are and we have, we have, part of our costs are fixed and some are variable. So right now, we have kindergarten classrooms with 16 kids in it. The actual additional cost to bring a kid into that room is not 16,000 or 18,000 dollars because we're fully staffed for that room and we could add two children, it would be within our class size and we would be fine. So we actually not incur significant additional costs, maybe some pencils and some paper and other things, but the cost to educate that one student in that additional room is not a problem. The real problem comes, which is what's happened in the past, is come the start of school and every one of our kindergarten rooms is now all of a sudden 24 kids and we have to hire an additional teacher. And now those three or four kids that came in might have been the difference between being in five classrooms versus six classrooms. More importantly to me, what worries me is our overall capacity of the school, that we, you know, when we entertained open choice and thought about, you know, we had 650 students in the school, you know, we had plenty of space, we had rooms that were being used by one teacher who had three kids in her room for pullouts and stuff, I mean, we had a lot of space in the building. We're now talking about one or two additional classrooms means our language program goes onto a cart and moves around the school because we don't have capacity in terms of rooms in the building anymore. So I just, I, but, you know, to me, that's a bigger concern is, is that we just don't have a ton of space. I mean, I think, you know, we made a commitment to stay at around 2%. I think that's probably okay. I think that's just a couple of kids, you know, in terms of our numbers now, it's not going to change things drastically. But again, we bring it to everyone to discuss just because, you know, we do have to vote on what we're going to do with the program.
So the, so the per student cost is actually less than a buck fifty per...
Probably, you know, again, it's hard to, you know...
Unless you have to hire a teacher.
Right. It's hard to say, you know, there is per pupil cost right now, but there's some, you know, there's additional, we can bring things into the school without having an initial impact. If it gets to a certain number, it suddenly becomes a bigger impact. We also don't know about special ed services that may come, and so, again, we're not...
Yeah, and to that point, an open choice, sorry to interrupt you, if an open choice student during the course of their time requires a one-on-one teacher assistant, let's say, that cost is completely borne by New Haven, so we don't have to put that money up. So we, and they also receive some of support services, some support services are paid by New Haven as well, so that's not a cost that we have to be unfortunately surprised with. I mean, we would do it for, we would do it for, we care for those in Woodbridge, but New Haven, actually, the model of the program allows that to be paid by New Haven. So there's a little bit of a safety net there in that respect. I do think, I would say, and I do believe that the class size thing and the space, and again, I am sort of, you know, I'm coming to you also reflecting on the numbers are looking a lot better and we didn't add any classrooms this year and maybe we won't be adding any classrooms next year either because of a number of factors, including maybe the demographics and the rise has leveled off, but I think the richness of diversity, of being in community, it's not just within our four walls of our community, but the greater community, the greater New Haven community, I think there's a lot of benefit to that. So I just, I'm an advocate for that, but I'm also certainly, Congressman, of the questions being asked about class size.
So what do we decide today?
So I think, I think we would want to decide, do we want to maintain 17 seats? Do we want to reduce the number of seats? Do we want to raise the number of seats? This is all for us to know that now, so we are ready in January when... This is all for us to, to know that now, so we are ready in January, when the program asks us, how many seats do you want to commit to for next year? We can give that number.
So, one other question, just information, for enrolling in open choice, like, how do we end up getting them in at, what grade is it?
So, it could be any grade. We have tried to make it kindergarten entry. So, we're going to graduate three sixth grade kids. The goal is to bring them to kindergarten, because it does strain the system a little when someone comes in at fourth grade and hasn't had any world language in the first few years.
So, there's some, like, there's some process where you can influence which grade they come in?
Right. Yes, Jeff.
So, that's great, because that means that you could address, as you mentioned, that allows us to take in students where we have a little more capacity, presumably?
Well.
We may not know at the time that we need to decide.
Well, at least where we think we may have capacity.
Right. The biggest issue is, again, I think ideally, from what administrators and teachers have said, they would ideally like a kid to enter in kindergarten and be part of the program from the beginning. The problem that we have is the kindergarten class is the one least knowledgeable class, and, you know, we might find out in the last month of August, you know, oh my God, we have, you know, extra kids.
More than we thought.
Right.
I just want to clarify, one option that you, I don't think I heard you say is, to say that we're going to declare 14 for next year, allow three to graduate, and not take three in kindergarten.
Correct.
We could do that as well. That's a totally valid option.
That's a possible option.
You could, you'll also get, we'll also get less per pupil.
Right. Go down to three.
Possibly.
No, no, definitely. It's about a percentage of number of kids.
Correct. So, we have less enrollment next year, or say flat, flat, you know, possibly.
Yeah, we'd probably be less.
Yeah, that's true. So, it's all, it's all a dice roll, at the end of the day, it's going to happen, and really, we're talking about.
Unlikely to go down to 700 kids.
But this is my thoughts.
But the other thing too, is, you know, you're talking about 14K, like, if, if we do step down to the next tier, we're talking about a 14K reduction in what we get. I don't think we should be making a decision.
Honestly, I will tell you, historically, when we've talked about this, I don't think we ever talked about dollars. It was never about revenue.
Correct.
We just talked about, how many kids do we want in the program? Someone made an argument for more kids, based on showing these numbers, that we can get an additional $1,000 per student, but again, my opinion is.
It's a good program.
The, the money part of it is less.
And I concur. Here, I think the more concerning issues, like you said, space at large.
I guess, I just have a logistical question. We have done those six months, and whatever it is for eight months, there's no way that you can wait until you have a lead on when class sizes will be?
Marshall, that, that comes in January, right? Or is it February?
We have to declare by February 1st.
February, okay. So, so theoretically, we, we could have this conversation, we could, we could wait on this, this conversation a couple of months too, if you really felt strongly about that.
No, my question is like, two weeks out, if you see that we have 85 kids, which means that you have 10 spaces that are potentially there, then you could say, okay, we could take five this year, which buffers a little bit of that.
I don't know. I mean, I'm sure that there are kids that are on the open choice list, they don't get into programs.
Yeah, there's a waitlist, yeah.
Certainly investigate.
That, that seems to go really easily, because it'd be great to have more, without compromising the chance that you flip to, to be forced to have an extra class.
So, you're, you're in a sense saying, wait until the end of August to?
If, if you're about to do that.
If you're about to.
We can investigate, we can, I mean, I think we, you may not, you may not, you may not be guaranteed in order to, if you, it would depend.
It's, it's probably a little bit of a, you know, roll of the dice, probably on that, but, for instance, if I went to them today and said, you know something, a student just moved, or, well, they would buy something to me anyway first, but, you know, or, we could really, the board really wants to add two more students, are there two students who are waiting, one of us to come to Beach Rock, because they really want to come here? The answer might be yes, and it's a fourth grader and a fifth grader, or it might be a kindergartner and a third grader, or, you know, you know, so.
I agree, the kindergarten thing makes perfect sense. So, I mean, that's, that's where we should be looking. Conceivably, first grader, we knew that the numbers were going to be really favorable based on the year before. But yeah, I mean, if you're looking at five classes that are 17 each right now, and New Haven says, yeah, we have five kids who'd love to go to Beach Rock.
So, is it a lottery process then?
Yes.
Lottery, yes. It's a complete lottery?
Yes.
It's a matter of academics, right?
Nope.
Correct.
Anyone who lives in New Haven, goes to a public school, New Haven, can fill out an application.
Just like the magnets.
So, it doesn't guarantee diversification of the school in any way, but.
Yeah. Geograph.
Geographic diversity.
Geograph.
So, we don't have to decide, I mean, I, I guess, one of the reasons we brought this up, or we bring this up early here, is that there have been discussions where people are like, we should get to the max capacity, which is, you know, which would be up to 70 to 50 people, you know, so I just want to make sure that.
Sounds like everyone's trying to.
Keep us in check. I just didn't want, we, we've gotten to January and had like, you know, arguments, and so, we've sort of pushed this discussion forward a little bit, just to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak and thinks about it when we come back in June.
Yeah. I think it'd be great to keep the 17 possible, but keeping in mind the upsides and downs. Yeah, or maybe Bob's idea of giving her percentage, if you wanted to qualify for 4,000 versus 3,000.
So, as we get further in the budget process, we can talk about it. So, we can.
Okay.
All right. Monday enrollment is just a report of upcoming meeting presentations. We're scheduled to have two presentations in October for you. One is the annual smarter balance testing report. The other one will be bringing to you, if not November, hopefully next month, the capital budget request, that we would eventually get a couple on, bring it to the town for their budget process. So, this is a good time for people to weigh in a little bit on what they're hoping to see. If you had a chance to look at last year's report on the smarter balance, you'll see the kinds of things we've typically reported on. I'm sure there's any questions or any requests or any thoughts.
I'd like to be, really keep back around, the second round, breaking it down by, I don't know, I can't remember if it is performance quartiles or quintiles, just so that we could see, you know, how each group.
Right. So, do you remember, so we broke it into, right, the bottom 25, and what we said was, how did those kids?
I'm looking at Lisa, Lisa is our testing guru.
Do you remember that? So, we, we broke it down to see how each quartile did as a group from year to year.
I don't know if this is possible, but, I don't know what the term is in education, but like, if you have the same store kids, right, and you follow them going from year to year.
Match cohort.
I'm sorry.
A match cohort.
A match cohort, okay.
Wait, so which piece of your?
We, we will certainly, we'll certainly check it out.
I'll check. Okay.
I don't know that it is with the reporting system that they use, but I'll check.
Okay. Thank you.
Tell me again what you, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing what you were asking.
Same kids in grade three to grade four, to grade five, and to grade seven. She's talking about making sure that we're not putting in students that have moved in and out. She wants the exact same students across multiple years.
Right. So, she's saying the vertical scores, scores only on kids who were here for all the years, and not the kids who came in in fourth grade or?
Yeah. So, classes to like, reason to get extra students.
Any other specific, did you look, I mean, people looked over last year's presentation? Okay. And then the capital budget request, just so you know, so we, we go over capital request, we probably have, you know, it's sort of a rolling five-year capital budget. And for new board members, we obviously did a large upgrade to the building, which really was sort of envelope, heating, cooling, air quality and stuff, but there's a lot of other items that sort of are past life expectancy, or in the process of declining life expectancy. And so, we did a walkthrough last year with the Board of Selectment, and the Board of Finance, and Board of Ed members who were available, and kind of walked the, walked the whole building to sort of go over all areas that needed to be addressed, and that got put together into a large sort of five-year plan. And then working with the town, we kind of broke it up into sort of some equal expenditures, rather than all upfront in the expenditure. So, I think most of the capital budget will be stuff, board members who've been on the board have seen, it's not new stuff, but we'll make sure you guys get a copy of that, and we'll go over it. If anyone wants to have another walk of the building, since there's so many new people, to kind of see exactly, kind of what are the things that we're talking about, we can do that, send them up. Yes, we also have the Board of Finance members and stuff, so it might.
Would the other Board of Select, the new Board of Selectment also be invited?
Yeah. I put that, I put that on Tony's list, we mutually put it on our list, so we're hoping that that can, that can come to fruition. We did talk about this in particular, we talked about the big picture of all these items at our facilities meeting this past week, last week, and we'll do the, do that again in October before finalizing.
Okay. Any other questions on capital?
Facilities.
Can you report on your facilities?
Yes, I guess the meeting started off well. It was noted that the school was in, I think the term was best condition they've ever seen, so that was a positive. So, besides the usual cleaning and whatnot, some bolts and boards replaced, door frames repainted, roof drain issues were fixed, and then several dead trees were removed from the property. There's some projects in process, the waste sorting cafeteria, that's going extremely well, so that was a positive. Roof drain issue is being looked at, another one, probably scope the drain, get a little deeper dive into. And then they're also looking into an outdoor water bottle filling station, amongst some other projects, which are some highlights. As mentioned, capital projects came up, a bunch of big ticket items, maybe some roof replacement, tune of 200,000 FY '21, so, big ticket items, keep on our radar. And then, as Steve mentioned too, we concluded that another walkthroughs needed, and all the board members will be invited and whatnot, so, basic update.
Thank you. Any questions for facilities? Finance.
Okay. Well, it's early in the year, so no big news is good news. The eight, roughly 8,000 deficit is due to a contractual payout obligation. The net losses of the cafeteria in E-Day are typical, given the low revenues over the summer months, and the expenditures that had to be made. So, that's pretty much it for finance.
So, we have one action item.
Yes, exactly, the natural gas.
Well, two, two action items, sorry. The one above it.
Yes, the task force.
Okay. You want to, you want to move that to the second.
Oh, do we do that at this point?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. Move that we authorize the superintendent.
Go up above, do that first one.
Okay. We move that we establish an ad hoc budget task force committee as presented.
Second. Okay, discussion. Want to just give a?
Yeah, so, the idea was to pull representatives from each stakeholder group to brainstorm ideas on how we can meet the town's guideline of coming in at a zero or less percent increase. And so, the thought was that it would be both educational, as well as a good opportunity to really gather ideas from different groups on how we can meet that challenge.
So, the charge members, all that stuff are in your agenda? Anyone have any questions?
I have an addition. It was suggested in the finance subcommittee meeting, that the business manager be added as a member. Do you, should I read?
You don't have to read. I have the reports in here.
The two parents, we would, we would, put them in the next principal's newsletter, indicating the opportunity, and parents could indicate their interest, and then we would do a random selection of those two parents from that.
And then, once we approve it, we're going to have two board, board of ed members, so if anyone on the board of ed is interested in sitting on this ad hoc group, let me know, and we'll, if we only get two people, we'll take the two, and if we get more, we'll, we'll let it out or something. Any further questions, discussion on this topic? If not, we'll take the amended language, which is the addition of the business manager as an ex-fisio member. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thanks. Okay. Second item?
Okay. We move that we authorize the superintendent and/or designate to enter into a multi-year contract for procurement of natural gas in conjunction with the Boa consortium.
Second.
Discussion.
I would actually ask, I think you should do a very brief, you know, summary again of the procurement, for those who are not at the finance meeting.
So, once again, this is actually a recurrence of action item that was taken by the board in 2016, for the then, what became the current contract, where the town, through its consulting, engages in formal bid to stay ahead of the market and try to lock in competitive price for the delivery of, for the generation of natural gas. So, once again, it's a recurrence of a multi-year contract, which is why we need board action, and it's a second generation, if you will, an extension, new bid of a, an existing agreement that we have with the town.
So, if it's with the town, why does it say the Boa Consortium versus Woodbridge?
And the town invites any of the other Boa districts that wish to participate.
But we're agreeing to participate with Woodbridge, if Woodbridge chooses to move forward with it?
So, where, Woodbridge is going to move forward with this negotiation.
And we're leading it.
They basically, the town of Woodbridge leads it, right? And then, basically, the other Boa districts are invited to participate in it as well, they may or may not.
We're really partnering with the town, if you will, in pulling or resourcing.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that, because it says the Boa Consortium, which makes you think that's Amni leading it, not the town of Woodbridge leading it, and then inviting Amni to join us.
And so, the specifics of that, I can't speak. Mr. Genovese handles that part of it, the opening up to the other Boa members, and whether he's, well, you know, informally polled them and gotten the yes or no of interest. The motion that you're entertaining this evening is simply to have the board partner with the town, to be a part of the town's bid. If there are other partners with that, I'm not aware of, only because Mr. Genovese is handling that.
So, if it makes you feel better, we can change the wording to just say in conjunction with the town of Woodbridge, and then if they choose to add other people, it's not. That's your concern? Is that fine?
Yes. Okay.
All right. So, just amended language, this basically just, it says in conjunction with the town of Woodbridge, because there is, I don't think Orange is included, is going to do this anyway, so, or just the language, it's really the town of Woodbridge that wants us to do this with them. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Curriculum committee.
Curriculum committee met on September 12th. The minutes are in e-meeting. It was, we had a really fine presentation, while McDonald gave phonics, the new phonics program, and word studying within the school district, and we decided that the curriculum committee will meet on the third Thursday of each month at 4:30. Our next meeting is October 17th. Summer curriculum work overview and summer programs will be on the agenda, so if there's any information that you would like included in either of those presentations, if you could email Bob or me, we'll get that information to the people who are making those presentations.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Lynn? Policy.
We also met a week and a half ago or so for policy. We had five policies that we reviewed in our group, and we accepted, or we put, we accepted four policies to be put out for exemption. I just said that wrong, but, so they're on the table for 30 days with the broader board. If folks want to review those, if there's any questions, if not, those will be accepted in 30 days. We decided to meet on the first Tuesdays every month at 8:00 AM.
Is this okay to ask a question about some of the policies? Is this the right form to do that?
I don't know. I guess we've not usually.
So, we did, actually, we already did the consent agenda. We did the consent agenda, which approved the, that for 30-day review, but you can ask the policy chair a question if you would like.
I was just curious, what is, for the immunization policy, I was just curious, what is the exemption rate?
It's about, we're about 3%. We're, we're, I remember Stacy, I asked Stacy last week, we're around, we're around 97% of our students are immunized. Yeah, about 3% are not.
Okay, so that's within, all right, not, not so bad.
Yeah.
All right. And then the age policy, of when you start school, it seems like there's quite a range in which parents are able to choose when they can start their kids. I guess this is historically been the case, but.
My understanding is it's legal language that we adopted for that.
This seems like in some classes you have quite an age range as a result of parents red-shirting their kids or holding back what have you, but is this something that is state required or do we have?
This is according to the Connecticut general statute, so all of this language is.
We have to give parents the option.
Right, but you know, if a child's coming in at the age of six, it doesn't mean they're going to start at kindergarten. They may have had a private kindergarten experience, or they, or they may have been homeschooled in kindergarten. So, you know, we're still taking a look at what the grade makes sense, you know, in terms of where they would typically go, but. It's certainly something that I wish this statement addressed in a more, you know, more manner. Because part of it is we have a different age cutoff in the state of Connecticut than other even surrounding states. And so, you know, technically, we're at December 31st, other states have a September 1st, and so kids will be in and out of the district. In addition to the idea that parents can think that their child was born in November and that based on their knowledge of their child, they should wait or send them, you know. I think that's a bigger issue that maybe we as a board can get some people to take up in Hartford, but. Anything else for policy? Cave Liaison. Are you still on Cave Liaison?
I think so. Let's see, a couple things. I know the Cave Caps Conference is coming up, and I'm pretty sure there's a handful of them going, so that'll be good. I don't know, I guess there is still time to register if folks have in, although I think it's a larger fee, but they've announced the main speaker. I don't know if folks will be interested, but Dr. Derek Gay will be presenting on diversity, equity, and inclusion with the goal of deepening cultural competency, cultivating common framework vision in language. That was interesting. One thing coming up that Cave is doing now is they're doing webinars now. I don't know if folks saw that on there. The September 26 webinar is Brain Science of Early Childhood, which sounds pretty cool. So if people are interested, they're free because we're all members, and they have other ones coming up as well.
Can I ask, there's one on cybersecurity, so you know, just see that all of these messages, should we be alarmed? Should we be concerned? Should we, do we have someone that's taking care of it?
So our check director, James Crawford, is on top of this. Actually, he says send out some very regular updates to our faculty and staff about cybersecurity. We are doing everything we can to make sure that we are ahead of the curve. We've been consulting a little bit, trying to share information also with Amity and with the town on that. We also offer parents an opportunity to hear a little bit about the safety of using computers at home. Last year, we did a PTO parent forum on that. So I, you know, we all have to be careful, we all have to be concerned about it. It's on our minds and it's part of, James goes to all of the, all of the state sessions that he will, like his own position, go to to make sure they are up on all of this, so, you know.
I'm glad you brought that up because I read that same Cave report.
That just came in today.
And it did raise some questions for me. I think it was the earlier report, they listed some best practices with regard to cybersecurity, and it just raised the question for me of whether we have those practices in place.
Right, because some schools in town are being, they're paying grants and.
Yeah, yeah, they're, right.
Correct. And James is also, so it's not just in the building, James also communicates with the business office and talks with the business office about that as well. We also, we also employ a program called Gaggle, which is also to safeguard students in the building, so it all, so, yeah. Maybe just, let's make sure that what Cave sent us, maybe show it to. I'll absolutely do that, Mr. Crawford. Just make sure that we are.
Double check those.
We are covering that needs to be covered.
One more thing is, and it's kind of late in the game, but this Wednesday, September 18th, from nine to eleven AM at Cave's office, there's what they call a hot topic meeting about the future of public education. So if anyone's free at that time and interested, that would be something.
Three hours, is that what?
Nine to eleven.
Two hours.
Two hours, yeah. So, and that's about it.
Okay. Great. On to new business. So we'll start, we need motions to get these things going, so.
Move that we approve the 2019-2020 Primary Mental Health Grant for submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education as presented by the administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So Cheryl will give us the briefest of descriptions of what this is. You have three or four pages in your packet. This is not a new item, this is something that we have benefited from in many past years.
So the PMHP grant stands for Primary Mental Health Grant, and as Mr. Gerald said, this has been something we've had for many years. They have child-led play, they have yoga, some family sessions. They also offer some group time with, it's a family team, so if a child is in crisis, we'll gather community providers as well as our in-school team to get resources wrapped around those students. So this is an opportunity where there's screening to see what students are at risk in grades K to three. Any questions?
No. All those in favor of approving the grant? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay. Next item.
Move that we establish Personnel Search Committee chaired by Dr. Stephen Fleishman. We move further that all members of the Woodbridge Board of Education be appointed to that committee to conduct the search for a new building principal.
I just have a question. Who else will be in the committee?
So let me clarify while we're doing this motion tonight, so it's a good question. So the reason we're doing this particular motion, this allows us as a board to meet in a non-meeting with search consultants regarding the eventual possibility of using one of them. Ultimately, what we'll do, I would imagine as a board, you'll want to then determine, you as a board are not going to make the search committee, but you'll establish a search committee that's made about various stakeholders, a few board members, a few teachers, a few administrators, a few teacher assistants, parents, so and so forth, that similar to past searches would create a mosaic of stakeholders to make that selection. But we're doing it tonight just to simply to, it's a procedural thing to allow us to meet with the consultants. Yes. Further discussion? Oh, is there a second? Do we need a second? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Do you want to talk about the security personnel? Sure, I will. So we put the security personnel review on here because it's been a couple years since we actually took a look, and you have actually a copy of the ad hoc group that met two years ago. There has been a continued evolution of security personnel options that school districts in Connecticut and across the country have used. At the time when we made the decision that we did a couple years ago, there was certainly people in all different camps in terms of what they thought the right security was. It seems to be a good time to take another look at that, to revisit that, and my suggestion, recommendation to the board would be to start that process by bringing that with a couple of sample policies to the policy committee. Let the policy committee have some discussion on this. The policy committee, I think, would probably then eventually want to bring it back to the full board for the next steps after the policy is reviewed, possible policies on a variety of ways to fill security, whether it's the current way, whether it is alternative ways.
Given that this is two years old, do you think there's any benefit in kind of repeating the process and getting some input from other people?
It might be. I think, I mean, coming out of the policy subcommittee, I think, you know, that that kind of conversation might come back directly to this group and.
Can I, I think that's a good idea. I think that we need to couch it in the context of it's not just SRO, you know, in a vacuum, like there are other considerations. So you know, if we have the current situation, then that will have budget implications elsewhere. So people don't, you know, don't have that kind of context when they're answering the questions, they're probably going to say, oh, yeah, sure, you know, we're all in the same situation. But if they understand there's a larger context, then they might be answered.
I think when we did this, obviously, we did this in a setting where we were getting a budget cut at that exact moment, and it was, we made very quick decisions. And I think the feeling now is, is that we're beginning, start of the year, there's been a lot of changes that we've been, got reports from Cave and other people about what school districts are doing in terms of security, where before there were police officers, now many schools have become security guards, and there's been a change in what districts are doing around the state. We haven't really looked at this since we just quickly approved the SRO for additional time, and so we just thought it was a good idea for policy to kind of look at it at a committee level and then just come back to it. But I just wanted to throw it out so everyone knew that this was something that we were going to look at, and this way when we put it on the policy agenda, people know that that's something we're going to discuss at a committee level.
Do you need a motion or anything?
No, not really.
I don't think so. I think it's just sort of, it's just more of a, just performing it procedurally.
Okay. And then we need to act on what we discussed in executive session.
Move that we extend the contract of the business manager through June 30, 2022, including a salary of $123,352 for the 2019-2020 school year, with an additional annuity equal to 1.5% of the 2019-2020 salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Al. We are going to go into public, we are going to go into executive session next, but we have a public.
No, no, it'll be a non-meeting.
Oh, sorry, yeah. But we have a public. We have a public comment. Public comment. I think, anyone else sign up? No, just Kathy, so. I'm just going to read this, the public comment statement that we're supposed to read before, even though you've been to these meetings.
Probably heard it before.
The board welcomes public participation. We ask that speakers please look at their comments for three minutes. Please be aware that the board will not respond to any comments made during the public comment period except to clarify issues, but we will take into consideration your comments and when appropriate, district administration will follow, we'll give it a later point in time.
Thank you. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Kathy Zdrowski, and I'm the president of the WEA. I'd like you to know that it's, the last time the WEA president spoke was eighteen years ago. My speaking tonight represents the frustration level of the WEA membership. As a WEA president, I would like to share disappointment that the Board of Education and the WEA were not able to come to an agreement on the teacher contract for the year 2023. The WEA has been forced to carry the burden of the town's poor planning. Teachers are facing the possibility of minimal increase that does not keep pace with the cost of living, in addition to the increase in insurance. Thank you.
So do we adjourn? So actually, we adjourn. We adjourn. Okay. All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?